If there's enough rules, use the crossing. Three, three. If there's not enough, that means we're on our limits.
Yeah.
Yeah, why? Did you turn? What are you doing? Well, after one of the common things is I have six.
Are you ready? I'll call the meetings and then can we tell you zoning point of appeals to order? The purpose for our hearing today is application Z two five zero zero seven six. The applicant is Crystal Lake Solar LLC. The request is for a reclassification from the B one neighborhood business district to the A one agriculture district and a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The PIN number associated with this application is fifteen nineteen three five one zero zero three. Property is located on Illinois Route one seventy six in Crystal Lake. It consists of roughly thirteen point five eight acres and is located on the southeast side of Illinois Route one seventy six, approximately one half mile northeast of the intersection of Bull Road and Illinois Route one seventy six in Nunda Township, Illinois. I'll have the members of the zoning board of appeals introduce themselves and the township in which they reside, starting on my left.
Robert Cozen, Algonquin Township.
Charlie Elder, Terrenceville Township.
I'm Linnea Kustra in Alden Township.
Thank you, Gardner, Nunda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Just Beverly Door Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. Publisher's certificate of publication from the newspaper is dated September twelve, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of posting was signed and date posted was September fifteen, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of mailing was signed and date mailed was October second, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice and publication in the newspaper and all three match. filing fees have been paid, the endangered species consultation has been received, and the McHenry County Sonoma Conservation District report has been received. For further information, please refer to NRI two five dash zero four eight dash four seven zero nine. Kim, is that date correct on affidavit of mailing? What was it? October second, twenty twenty five, that would be today?
No. I'm sorry. That's not. Is that affidavit in the file?
Yeah. Should be in the file if you wanted to double check the date on it?
Yes. Let's take a look. I paused when I went to read it. I'd like to talk about that.
It's in the file. Yeah, it should be in here.
All right. So I'm going to go back to the affidavit of mailing and it was signed and the date mailed was actually September tenth, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. So how the hearing works today, for anyone who's not been at a zoning hearing before, if you can't hear, I encourage you to come up closer to the front. I hear someone, you know, cupping their ears. There's some chairs up near the front that you could move up to if you'd like. We don't have microphones here, so you just have to come up closer for trying to speak up. How the hearing works, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so rules of testimony apply. Anyone who's going to comment or give testimony will have to be sworn in. There are rules to follow during the hearing. When the petitioner will present their testimony, they will be asked questions by the board and by staff. After that time, any member of the public can ask questions. You will be allowed three minutes for your questions, and then we'll move on to someone else. You have to, you can't speak unless it's your time to speak. There's no applause, anything like that. This is not a rally. This is a hearing. And if you are repetitive in your questioning, then I will shut you off because if they've answered the question, they've answered the question. But otherwise, the public can continue to ask questions. I ask that you be respectful of the board as well as the petitioner. If you're not willing to follow the rules, the security downstairs is watching the hearing and all I need to do is raise my hand and they'll be up and they'll be asking you to leave. So we just ask that everybody follows the rules so that everybody can get their voice heard, but that we conduct a good hearing. So after the questions have been asked, then the staff will give their report to us and then at the close of that time, you will be offered the opportunity to give your opinion on this. So the first opportunity is to ask questions of their testimony. It is not the time for you to state your opinion on this. You'll be given that opportunity later in the hearing. And then you'll each have three minutes to state your opinion on why you believe this should or should not be allowed. So anyone who feels that they're going to be speaking today, whether you're giving testimony, whether you're asking questions, I'll need to swear you in, so I will ask you to raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the petitioner, sir. Would you please introduce yourself? And because we only have six people here today, this is being recorded, so when you switch to a different person, I would like them to introduce themselves as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I suppose I'll just sit if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. My name is Jim Griffin. I'm with the law firm of Shane Banks. I'm here representing the applicant, Crystal Lake Solar LLC. With me is Matt Kwitkowski with the applicant, Nexamp. We have Matt Clemente with Stantec, the project engineer, and I have Mike Marus with Marus and Associates, who is our property value appraisal expert. We're here before you for two recommendations. First is on the rezoning from B one to agricultural, and second is a conditional use permit for a two megawatt commercial solar energy project. So as we present our testimony to you, I'd ask you to keep a couple of things in mind as we go through this. First, as to the rezoning, keep in mind, this is what we'd call a downzoning in intensity from a B one commercial zoning district to the agricultural zoning district. Currently, according to the county zoning ordinance, the uses that are allowed as a matter of right, could be built today on this property in the B one zoning, would include an automobile dealership, a gas station, a hotel or motel, a restaurant or warehouse, all uses that are much more intense than what would be permitted under the agricultural zoning district and are much more intense than a solar energy project, which has very little traffic, virtually no noise, will not have lighting, and therefore is not very impactful on neighboring property owners. Additionally, in the B one zoning district, the setbacks are far less than what would be required for a solar energy project. Setbacks are ten feet and twenty feet for rear and side yards, where for a commercial solar energy project, it's a hundred and fifty feet from a residence and fifty feet from the property lines. So not only is the solar project less intense, but it has greater setbacks. Additionally, this project, as Matt will go through, has significant landscape buffering around it to minimize the view share from surrounding properties. As far as the conditional use permit, the application provides the necessary requirements under your zoning ordinance, and it was confirmed to be complete. And Matt is going to go through and demonstrate how the application and the project meets each of the requirements under the McHenry County zoning ordinance for a solar energy project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Matt Kwitkowski, and I'm the project developer for Nexamp. We are the parent company for Crystal Lake Solar LLC, the applicant. Just to give you a little bit of background about our company, we were founded in two thousand and seven by two veterans who came back from being deployed in the Middle East and realized a lot of the conflict overseas was about energy resources, so they wanted to do something about it. Fast forward to today, we're a national vertically integrated company, which means we just don't develop these projects. You know, there's a lot of solar developers or renewable energy developers that develop and sell. We operate them through the lifetime of the project, all the way through decommissioning. Like I said, we're a national company now. We've got, the dark highlighted states are active markets. We're all the way from Maine to Hawaii. We have headquarters in Chicago and Boston. Specific to Illinois, we started to build out our team in two thousand and eighteen. We have an office now in Chicago with over seventy-five employees, currently operating fifty projects statewide with more in construction, and our assets serve over eighty-seven hundred residents and small businesses in the state, and that's through the community solar program, whether that be with Comet or Ameren. This is just an example. It's kind of a more established site. It's about three and a half years old, four years old now. It's adjacent, in adjacent county, Burlington, King County. It's a little bigger than what we're proposing, sixteen acres within the fence. It's two point eight megawatts and serves nearly four hundred subscribers. What's interesting about these picks in Illinois is we plant all of our sites with pollinators, and that's native grasses and wildflowers. That provides a lot of benefits, not only for pollinators and wildlife, also helps with aesthetics, and it really does wonders for stormwater infiltration and runoff. You know, these are deep rooted, this is deep rooted vegetation, and you know, the runoff because of that, it breaks up the soil, sucks up water better than turf grass, row crops, fallow fields, and certainly any other intensive use. We have a handful of projects here in McHenry County, some, of course, all of them should have came through here except for Bolt Valley. Harvard Solar is along Route one seventy-three. That's one that we developed from the whole process. OE IL Solar, which is Charles Road north of Woodstock High School, that's one we acquired. We do not only develop these, but we acquire them from other developers to own and operate. And then we've got Two Under Construction, Bolt Valley. It's actually in Bolt Valley's jurisdiction. And then Dodie Road Solar, which just received its building permit, which is south of Woodstock. And then just, this is an area map showing our location kind of in the center with the star. It's right along one seventy-six, right between Snap-on Tools. I think there's a pointer here, maybe?
The red?
The red. Yeah. There's Snap-on there in the Fox River. As you move down one seventy-six, it's Prairie Isle Golf Course. There is a lot of commercial use in here. There's some landscaping nurseries located right here, utility corridor, and then our site is located right there. Project information, like I said, it's along Illinois Route one seventy-six, zoned B one currently. The yellow area you see on the graphic is actually where our fence is, so that's where, you know, basically the fence line, and the red is the parcel. The parcel's fifteen dash nineteen dash three fifty-one dash zero zero three. The owner is Pease Leasing Company, and as mentioned before, the parcel size is about thirteen point seven acres. The project size within the fence is eight point six acres. The project capacity is a two megawatt AC project. As you may know, with community solar, you can go up to five megawatts, and this is two, so it's on the smaller side. And then the project life is thirty to forty years. And then these are some, just some images. This is driving northeast at the very southwest corner of our site. Here, the entrance to the wedding venue that's adjacent to us. This is driving north again, the site on the right. This is driving southwest, looking southwest at the site, so looking the other direction towards that wedding venue. Then another direction. The existing trees on both sides will be maintained. During the growing season, it's really hard to see houses from this area because of the established buffers. And then this is looking east at the site from one seventy-six with the existing trees in the back. Again, those trees are remaining. Due diligence thus far, everything we've done to kind of de-risk this site up to this point. We've obviously done site selection, we've done property surveys, which is boundary topography. We've done a wetland delineation to look for regulated waters, wetlands, or streams. No impact there. We've done endangered species review with IDNR Ecocap as well as Fish and Wildlife Service, and no impacts there. SHPO consultation, which is State Historic Preservation Office. There's no historic impact at the site. We've got a utility agreement with Comet to connect to the Comet grid, and we've executed an Agriculture Impact Mitigation Act with the Illinois Department of Agriculture, which is required for these sites. And that just makes sure we preserve and protect the farmland during construction, during operation, and then restore it to better value. And then we've done consultation with the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration. And then with that, I'm going to hand it over to Matt. He's our civil engineer of record, Matt Clemente with Stantec, and he'll go through the specifics of the site plan and the design.
Thank you. Again, I'm Matt Clemente with Stantec, senior project manager, and for this project on the engineer of record registered in the state of Illinois as a civil engineer. We have an updated site plan. Looks like you have the latest and greatest from this morning. Does anybody want eleven by seventeen copies?
Sure.
These are with you guys. That's the same as the large one that you have in front of you, and I also have one on the...
We've got a big one.
I've got a big one. Thank you, Jim.
On this board, I can point to just a little bit. Just to explain a little bit about the site plan, again, here's Highway one seventy-five, one seventy-six. This is an Illinois state highway. That means the access drive will be permitted with IDOT. We have one entrance, and you can see some changes in the color version of this drawing compared to what's sort of shown in black and white and gray. When we originally submitted back in September, after that submittal, we did have some discussions with our neighbor to the south, and after those discussions, planned to move the development a little bit further north, a little bit further away from the back property line as well. We also moved the entrance drive from the bottom corner out a few hundred feet away from the existing wedding venue entrance. So the black and gray items are what was originally submitted. The, what's shown in red is the updated panel layout. What's shown in blue is the updated driveway layout, and what's shown in green is the updated landscaping. As of this morning, in discussions with county planning staff, we've added a little bit additional landscaping through here, through there, through this area, connecting this corner at the south and connecting this corner at the north. So basically, completely surrounding the site, and there's an overlap here that's also shown on your sheets as well. The setbacks on the site required by state law and the county's ordinance, fifty-foot setback all the way around the site, that's here, and we're showing you with a dashed line, and in the back, that's the minimum. We're actually between seventy and a hundred-foot setback, and even more, obviously, in some areas along the roadway, probably eighty feet off the south line instead of the fifty-foot minimum. And then along the back edge, along the east edge, instead of the fifty-foot minimum, we're about a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and nineteen feet setback with our panels. The other requirement that the state law and the county has is a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet to any residence or any building of public accommodation. What we're showing, there are distances. These circles represent a hundred and fifty feet from the back wall of these homes, and the closest residence right here, we calculated as two hundred and seventeen feet. So about seventy feet more than what the state law and the county ordinance require. Then the other item that I'm showing on here is the existing vegetation on the north side of the road and then back behind the homes here. Obviously, there's hundreds of feet of wooded area here, narrows back down to about fifty on the south end, but that's, those are all existing trees. The one item, let's see, we can talk about, all the wiring is underground, except for the power poles that are right along the road here. And then the other item that I wanted to touch on quickly is stormwater and erosion. So we will conform, obviously, with the county's requirements. And one of those requirements is that our runoff post-development, after we build the project, is no greater than what it was before. And as a farm field, there is a significant amount of runoff, especially when there are not crops planted on the field. When we come in with a native prairie all the way around the site, our runoff numbers and runoff rates will go down. So this project and the benefit will reduce the stormwater runoff rates. All of the water on the site drains away from the road and down to the ditch that is along the south, the north side of the neighbor, neighbor's property. That's why the water goes now from off the farm field, and it will continue to go to the same place, except that the numbers will be reduced. I think that's all I wanted to discuss. Oh, and height was the other item. State law allows a twenty-foot height. The county's ordinance reflects that. Our panels at full tilt will be about twelve feet off the ground. When they're flat at noon, probably in the six to seven foot range. So we're much lower than what's allowed by the law. I can answer some questions later, unless, Matt, do you have other slides?
Yeah.
So landscape, pollinator seed mix, those are developed by a company that works with across the state of Illinois and the Midwest. They develop, they develop a native planting seed mix specifically for this area. It's not just a regular DOT mix or DOT prairie mix. It's specifically designed for this site. Those, that prairie mix will reduce stormwater runoff and increase infiltration. There are screening along this edge, double row of evergreens. The rest of the site, I believe, is a single row. And then, obviously, we won't be touching any of the existing trees along the back or along, obviously, the other side of the road. And then we also develop a maintenance plan for the landscaping. Obviously, you can't just dump these native seeds and leave. It will require a couple of different mowings and some spot treatment of any invasive species that come in, weeds, but after a while, just a periodic mowing will be all that the site requires as far as landscape maintenance. And again, as Jim mentioned, as far as the amount of traffic that's generated on this site, it's really mowing a couple of times a year, so that's not a lot of traffic, and obviously, small pickup trucks or vans for the electrical maintenance. Decommissioning is also required. So after thirty, forty years, when this project has completed its life cycle, we are required to come in and remove everything from the site, all the panels, all the access drives, everything that we construct on the site, except for some of the wires, if they're buried deep enough and the owner allows us to leave them in place, everything comes off. In order to guarantee that that happens, we put up a bond in the form that's agreeable to the county for the full amount of the decommissioning cost. So if Nexamp or any company would go belly up, the county has the funds to decommission the project and remove it from the property. And then at which point, it would return back to its current condition as an ag field and the property owner could continue. And this is Matt. So I can answer any questions that the commission has later.
And then now, just to highlight some of the benefits, one of the biggest benefits, it adds to the tax base without adding demand for public services. There's no impact to the schools, parks, roads, but it adds a significant tax base, which I'll show you what's modeled below in a second. It offers community solar subscriptions. This is community solar, so folks can subscribe to save on their normal utility bills. This allows people to have an investment in renewable energy without putting panels on their home for various reasons, whether that be they're too expensive to put on the roof or the lots too shaded. It's a temporary use of land, farmland and land, and then it offers construction job opportunities. We hire a lot of local tradesmen and employ about thirty to forty different people for each project. This is the tax model, so the left is current taxes, and then what would be the approximate taxes for a solar facility, a two-megawatt solar facility. In year one, total taxes are five hundred and eighty-three dollars currently. With a two-megawatt solar facility, it's twenty times that, at eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then your highest taxing body within your kind of taxing breakdown of the county property tax is Prairie Grove School District forty-six, so that just shows you, opposed to two hundred and seventy-one dollars, you're getting forty-five hundred dollars. And that goes for all the taxing bodies under the biggest. It's twenty times more that first year. And then over the forty-year total, if this facility were to operate for forty years, the total taxes currently would be forty-three, roughly forty-four thousand, with the Prairie Grove getting twenty thousand versus three hundred and twelve thousand, which is seven times. That's because of the depreciation of that facility. And that equates to seven times more for the school district and other taxing bodies underneath that. And then I can go through, do you want me to read through all these, just how we've complied with the solar project standards? I know we've had...
As long as it's also in the application that we have it, if you would like us to adopt that, or you can go through them, whatever you choose.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and go through them. One is application. Under A, it's a threatened and endangered species consultation, or otherwise known as Ecocap, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, is required. At the time of conditional use permit application for any site that is five acres or greater and currently in agricultural use or undeveloped, and that's completed in the application. B, a site plan shall be provided showing all improvements, including structures, fencing, power lines above and below ground, lighting, landscaping, at a detail sufficient to understand the location, height, appearance, and area. That's completed in the application. All other applications, submittal requirements outlined in the planning and development. Department zoning application packet as published on the McHenry County website, that's a department confirmed application is complete. Two is site design. Under A, solar panels, structures, and electrical equipment excluding fences and power lines for interconnection shall be erected no less than fifty feet from any lot line and no less than a hundred and fifty feet from any residence other than a residence on the same ownership parcel. That's, the site plan demonstrates compliance with these setbacks. B, no structures excluding power lines for interconnection may exceed twenty feet in height. Power lines shall be placed underground to the maximum extent possible. Maximum height will be under twenty feet per site plan and narrative. Lighting must comply with sixteen sixty zero two zero, and no lighting is proposed for the site. Solar panels shall have a surface that minimizes glare and shall comply with section sixteen dot sixteen dot zero four zero D, and panels are covered with anti-glare coating. A glare study will verify glare, any glare to receptors, and we can... A glare study will verify glare, any glare to receptors, and we can adjust any, any tilting if there's any glare issues. Two, site design continued. The facility shall be situated as to minimize impacts to woodlands, savannas, wetlands, drainage tiles, and encroachment into floodplains. All site development shall comply with the stormwater management ordinance. Any damaged drain tile shall be repaired. No impact, there's no impact to the sensitive environmental areas. Project will obtain stormwater permit. In order to prevent, prevent erosion, manage runoff, and provide ecological benefit, the facility shall be planted with low-profile native prairie species using a mix appropriate for the region and soil conditions per the Illinois Department of Natural Resources standards, as amended from time to time. And our vegetation plan complies and, and is included in the application. Fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electric Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire must comply with Section 1656050A dot one dot C of this ordinance. We are not proposing barbed wire, but the site plan demonstrates compliance with this fencing otherwise. Two, H, any part of the facility that is within 500 feet of a non-participating residence or road right-of-way shall be landscaped with an arrangement of native shrubs, subject to approval by the county board unless the facility is screened from view by existing vegetation. Vegetative plan complies and it is included in the application. Section two, I, prior to building permit issuance, the operator shall prepare a landscape monitoring and maintenance plan to ensure that establishment and continued maintenance of the native prairie species, all installed landscape screening, and all existing vegetation that provide, provides required landscape screening. Applicant will provide required plan prior to building issuance. Section two, J, prior to scheduled public hearing, the operator shall enter into an agricultural impact mitigation agreement with the Illinois Department of Agriculture, IDOA, as required by that department. Executed AMA is in the application. Site, uh, two, site design continued. K, prior to building permit issuance, the operator shall provide an executed road use agreement between the applicant and the appropriate governing road and highway jurisdictions or the Illinois Department of Transportation showing approved entrances. Applicant will comply and obtain agreement and permission for roads. Three, safety. Prior to construction, the operator shall prepare an emergency management plan acceptable to the county and the local fire, fire district, and shall be responsible for training of emergency personnel as needed. Applicant will comply. A sign shall be posted providing the name of the operator and a phone number to be used in case of an onsite emergency. Site plan demonstrates compliance. Then three, safety, continued. Access shall be granted provided appropriate advance notice for periodic inspection of the site by the county or the local fire, fire district. Applicant will comply. Damaged solar panels shall be removed, repaired, or replaced within 60 days of the damage. The ground shall remain free of debris and damaged solar panels at all times. Applicant will comply. Four, abandonment. The commercial solar energy facility shall be considered abandoned if the operator fails pay rent as specified in the agricultural impact mitigation agreement, or it ceases to generate electricity for a period of 12 consecutive months. Reports of electrical power production shall be provided to the county upon request. An abandoned commercial solar energy facility must be deemed, or must be decommissioned and removed within 12 months from the time it is deemed abandoned. The operator may appeal in writing to the zoning enforcement officer for an extension of time in order to remove the facility or to bring the solar farm back into operation. Applicant will comply. Five, decommissioning. Prior to building permit issuance, the operator shall prepare a decommissioning plan which shows the final site conditions after the commercial solar energy facility has been removed from the property. Decommissioning plans shall require removal of all solar panels, electrical equipment, poles, piles, foundations, and conduits above and below ground. Access roads, fencing, ground cover, and landscaping may remain only by agreement of property owner. Applicant will apply or comply. Five, decommissioning continued. Prior to issue, building permit issuance, the operator shall submit an engineer's estimate of cost for decommissioning the facility and restoring the site in accordance with the approved decommissioning plan. Upon review and approval by the zoning enforcement officer of the estimate, the operator shall obtain a bond, letter of credit, or other form of security acceptable to the county to be held by the Department of Planning and Development in the amount of 100% of the estimate. Provision of this financial assurance shall be phased in over the first 11 years of the project's operation or as otherwise provided in accordance with the executed agricultural impact mitigation agreement. Applicant will comply. C, during the operation of the facility, a new engineer's estimate of cost for decommissioning shall be submitted every 10 years to the Department of Planning and Development. Upon approval of the estimated cost by the zoning enforcement officer, a revised certainty shall be provided to the Department of Planning and Development in the amount of 100% of the new estimate. Applicant will comply. And I think I went through them all, so I just wanted to hand it over to Michael Marousse, who's a real estate valuation expert, and he's going to introduce himself.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Marousse. I'm President of Marousse and Company. I have a real estate appraisal consulting firm located in Park Ridge, Illinois. I've probably appraised 20 properties within about three or four miles of the subject property to numerous properties in McHenry County. And I've looked at and consulted on over 75 solar projects from ones as small as this, two megawatts, some over 100, and one up to 1,500 megawatts. So I've kind of studied solar throughout the Midwest, particularly in Illinois and also McHenry County. Basically, I looked at the proposed plan. I looked at the engineering. I went out, looked at the site, investigated comparable sales in the neighborhood, drove through the streets of the, when I say north adjoining subdivision on Blossom Street. And then looked at the setbacks. Obviously, the state setback and county is 150 feet. Concern is the setbacks from touching the houses, and this is minimum 220 feet. The other issue is screening, and there's mature trees and vegetation around the majority of the property as it's proximate to houses. So when we look at projects and whether it be renewable energy, or industrial, or waste management, or mixed-use properties, we look at noise, smell, traffic, truck and traffic, and then strain on the community, the schools, on the public safety, and on the road systems. Clearly, in my experience of looking at all of these type of issues, solar is a very passive use and really does not have any stress on the public services, as you saw. There's some additional economic impact, but it becomes basically kind of also an interim use of the land. In this situation, in all situations, we look at what's entitled per the existing zoning, which allows development significantly closer to adjoining properties. It involves commercial use, obviously, as an appraisal, you look at what's economically feasible. Would you put a gas station there? You know, maybe, maybe not. A auto dealership, you know, it's an allowed use. Not sure the traffic counts are big enough, but you know, I've actually appraised two dealerships on 31. Kennel, commercial kennel, we've looked at a lot of kennels. This actually might be a site that would appeal to that, restaurant warehouse. Today's warehouses have a parapet wall anywhere from 35 to 42 feet. That's the tip of the wall. So it's clearly a more obvious and massive use. What we look at again are the economic benefits, which I just discussed. We look at matched pairs of similar situations of properties that are within several hundred feet of a solar array, and similar houses with sizes, age, vintage, appealing to a similar market that are not proximate, but in the same area. And having looked at probably 150 of those matched pairs, have not found any what indicate negative impact on value. The other thing that I do is I contact assessors in the counties that have solar to see, number one, have there been tax appeals filed by proximate residential properties? And have those appeals been given relief with the allegation of negative impact? There have been none. I haven't found a single assessor that has found evidence and actually assesses properties proximate to solar arrays, any less than other properties in the area. There's peer-reviewed articles that I've reviewed, I've talked to authors, and find no evidence for a property particularly as small as this and as screened as this that have any negative impact on value. So again, I've got quite a bit of, I've probably done 350 value impact studies, maybe half of them, maybe a little less, on renewable energy, wind, gas to electric plants, transmission lines, and I haven't found any negative evidence. I've testified, McHenry court probably put it 10 times, mainly a condemnation court, so I obviously have experience in that also. So my conclusion is that the proposed project will not have any negative impact on property values.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We're welcome to, we're happy to answer any questions you might have, any questions from the audience.
There are standards for amendment that were in your packet for the change from one land use to another. Do you want to just, us to just accept those, or do you want to go through those?
Well, we could, I could go through those. I think our, the standards for the MAP amendment are, the first one is the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the existing uses and zoning of nearby property. The nearby properties are a mixture of zoning districts, some residential and some commercial. Keep in mind, the property has historically been used and only been used for agricultural purposes. So this is a rezoning to the use that has historically been the subject of this property. Agricultural uses are compatible with residential uses. There are many instances in McHenry County where you have agricultural zoned land adjacent to residential properties, and that is very common. As Mike Marousse testified, the agricultural uses that would be available, including solar project, are much less intensive than a B1 zoning district would on the nearby residential uses. So we do believe that this agricultural zoning is compatible with the surrounding residential uses. The second criteria is the extent to which property values of the subject property are diminished by the existing zoning. Currently, the B property is not developed in the B1 zoning district as it's, as it's currently zoned. Additionally, I think based on the communications we've received from the neighbors concerning this project, the concern of the neighbors is not that this property will be developed with too less of an intensive use, but that the use will be, you know, more intensive and have a negative impact on their, on their residential property uses. So we believe that this rezoning to an A1 will benefit the subject property by allowing a use such as a commercial solar facility, but also a use that will not have any negative impact on the surrounding residences. The third criteria is the extent to which the public health, safety, welfare of the public are promoted by the existing zoning. Here, meaning, I think, the proposed zoning. We don't have, this project won't have any negative impacts on the surrounding properties. I think we've gone through from the engineering design, from Mr. Marousse's testimony, that this project is a low profile. It's got existing screening, will have increased screening, will not produce any significant traffic, odors, noise, lighting, or other types of impacts that tend to have negative impact upon surrounding properties. So we believe that that criteria is also met. The third one, the fourth one is a relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant if the proposed zoning is denied. So we don't believe there's any gain to the public by allowing this project. This project won't have any negative impact on the surrounding land uses, won't have any negative impact on property values. So there's no gain to the public by the rezoning being denied and the property remaining in B1. In fact, it could be a future significant gain to the public if, if indeed, the neighbors that are here today are concerned with more intensive uses that would be allowed under the B1 zoning district. That would eliminate that possibility because the property would be rezoned to ag and only projects such as the solar facility or other agricultural uses which are of low intensity would be allowed. As far as the hardship imposed upon the applicant, this is a viable use for this property. This property is, you've seen it's triangular, surrounded by a variety of different uses, so it may not fit really within any one particular use. A solar project with its limited impacts or no impacts on surrounding property as an interim use is actually very beneficial. So one thing about solar projects is you can put them next to residential, and you can put them next to industrial or commercial, and they fit within a variety of, of other land uses. So we believe that we've satisfied this criteria. The fifth criteria is the suitability of the property for the purposes for which it is presently zoned. The property is presently zoned B1, and as far as whether it's suitable for that zoning district, it hasn't developed with B1 uses in almost 20 years since it's been zoned B1. That would be a signal that, that there's been no demand for that type of use. Will there be a demand for that in the future? There may be. As you can see, as Matt went through, there has been development of other commercial uses on 176. But for right now, the property owner believes, and I think that the historic use of the property would, would demonstrate that this is correct, that this, as a solar project, is actually the best use of this property at this time and for the near future. And also would be the least impactful use on the neighboring property owners. So we believe that this criteria has been met. The last criteria is the length of, excuse me, the sixth criteria is the length of time the property has been vacant, as zoned and considered of the context of the land development in the vicinity of the subject property. So this has been vacant, used for agricultural, which is not necessarily vacant, but it's not been developed with the B1 uses. And so I think that provides strong evidence that a rezoning to, downzoning in fact, to an agricultural district to allow a viable solar energy project does show that this satisfies that criteria. The next one is the community need for the proposed use. Illinois has goals of supporting community solar projects through the statewide siting law, which the county has adopted. Those are intended to allow and to promote the development of these projects in appropriate locations, and we believe this is an appropriate location. Illinois also has a goal of having, you know, a non-carbon producing energy uses, and this is one of those. This also will serve the electricity, electricity needs of the subscribers who will tend to be, you know, located near the vicinity of this project. So there is a community need for clean renewable energy. The last one is the consistency of the proposed amendment with the adopted comprehensive plan and the appropriateness of the comprehensive plan to the subject property. The staff report, which I can't do better than that, did say that this rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan or the county, and we agree with that conclusion. So we do believe that all the criteria for a rezoning has been satisfied by this application. And also, as far as the conditional use, that the project meets the requirements as Matt went through of each and every provision of the McHenry County zoning ordinance. And under the zoning ordinance, you have the state siting law, when that occurs, the project should be recommended for. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with questions on my right.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying the approval standards for the MAP amendments. I just wanted to point out that this is also a balancing test on behalf of the zoning board and the county board when making these findings, and I appreciate you expanding the testimony. My first question is, I want to go back to the site plan, and I wanted to talk about how this is a downzoning. Now, if this site was being developed as a B1, you would not be preserving these trees or having these 217-foot setbacks, correct? Do you have any idea? It's, you said 50 feet, I think, from the property line?
50 feet is the-
And identify yourself, please.
Sure. This is Matt Clemente-
This is Matt Clemente. There's the requirement for solar is 50 feet. The requirement for a business zoning is 10 to 20 feet depending on if this is seen as a side yard or a rear yard.
So if we denied this MAP amendment and thus the conditional use failed, that it could be a parking lot that much closer to the residential areas?
That's my understanding of the county zoning requirements, yes.
And under your site plan, once we approve it, this is the site plan that will go forward with the building permitting process. There won't be substantial changes. You won't come in and clear the trees or move the fences substantially. This is what the final design will look like?
Yes, that's correct.
And under this final design plan, you explain that you've moved the access road to accommodate concerns with the neighbors and I dot? And that it's not going to be substantial traffic? Can you give me an idea of how, how much traffic and how long this will be under construction?
Sure. Okay. So as far as the location, our original plan, which was the original supplemental back in September, had our entrance onto Highway 176 at the far southwest corner of the site. After discussions with the neighbor to the south, we pulled that driveway further away to minimize any confusion of the driveway locations and just to have a green space separating the properties. As far as the generation of traffic, there's going to be traffic during construction. So all the materials need to be delivered, all the solar panels, gravel for the access drives, the trackers, that'll all need to be delivered. But then after construction, we're talking about a couple of visits per month in general. As Matt mentioned, there's nobody on site on these solar facilities. They're all monitored from a central location. And any maintenance that's required on the site, if a panel goes out, if there's something wrong with the electronics, are dispatched to the site. But in general, there's nobody coming on and off the site every day. Obviously, with a business use, there'd be substantially more traffic. So, and then also as far as maintenance for the native prairie grass, that's a couple mowings per year. So a trailer would, a truck with a trailer would come onto the site, drop off the mower, the mower would visit the site, and then it would leave, it wouldn't be a long-term operation.
Thank you. And when you talk about the green space there, is that part of your leasehold? Are you planting that with prairie? Are you going to put trees in? What's the plan there?
It would be the prairie, extension of the prairie over the whole property.
Okay. As it relates to the screening process, you operate and own other facilities in McHenry County and you're familiar with our fencing and our screening guidelines, which are substantially different than, than different municipalities. And I think you can see that I'm going toward the Woodstock letter where, where the residents were concerned that it was going to look like the Woodstock development on 14 and Lily Pond. In this case, our siting standards are substantially different than the requirements for Woodstock. Are you, am I saying something accurate?
Yes, that's true. I'm not familiar with the Woodstock standards, but the, our landscaping is based on the county standards.
Okay. Well, I will say for the record that our standards are substantially different than the standards for Woodstock. And you are going to be screening it all the way around. Can you tell me a little bit about the screening plans that you'll be using and how tall they're anticipated to get?
They should be on, in the plan set that we supplied. Not on the site plan, but in the, in the plan drawings. So there are four types of plants that are proposed. In the landscape portion of the, of the plans, there's a Viburnum, there's a Dogwood, another Viburnum Arrowwood, and Arborbita. Those would be mixed throughout the, the site and planted in accordance with the county standards.
Thank you. And you're leaving all of the existing trees up?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're not required under state law to leave those?
Yes, that's correct. Including, you know, any portion that's, that's on the property, you know, we could remove those, we have no intention to and do not plan to remove any of those trees.
And as the owner operator of the project, you'll be in charge of making sure that the screening takes and that it's well maintained?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What else did I have? Oh, I wanted to get back to the utility agreement. We've been hearing about the interconnection agreements and grid improvements to the local infrastructure. Can you speak a little bit to what this is going to do for the neighbors as you improve the grid?
Yes. Typically, there's always, 75% of the time, we just can't connect to the existing utility pole and build our site, turn it off. There's always massive upgrades and a lot, a lot of money goes towards ComEd side of things to upgrade all the lines and devices, shall we call them, whether that be transformers all the way to the substation. So basically, from our site to the substation, there's an upgraded, upgraded infrastructure to make sure that their grid can handle what we're producing. Is that...
That's, that's where I'm going with it. I'd like you to expand it a little bit more and explain how, who pays for that and how it's going to benefit the neighborhood?
Yes, we, we pay for that. That's part of our, to get our interconnection application or agreement signed, we have to make that deposit. And ComEd does all the upgrades outside of the site. And what it does, it creates a more resilient grid. So there's, you know, you're getting upgraded equipment, there's generation being produced local that goes onto the local grid, it's not being imported. And so it's, it's a more, I guess, sustain, it creates a more sustainable power grid within, locally, because there are upgrades to the lines, the transformers, and then we're generating on top of that. And, you know, our electricity that we generate doesn't, you know, it doesn't work like, if you subscribe, it goes to your house. Electricity is just free flowing. So anything that enters, leaves our site can go where it's needed. So basically it makes that, it makes the backbone of the local grid stronger.
So it'll improve service to local homes?
Yes.
And businesses? Thank you. I wanted to go back, I'm sorry, to revisit the, the height of the panels. So the law is that the panels can be 20 feet tall. The planting proposals that you've got go up to like 15 to 20 feet if they're happy. And you're saying that your panels are not going to be any taller than 16 feet. So really, once the screening comes in and coupled with the existing screening, you're not going to see very much of this from the street at all?
Right, that's correct.
Unlike if you were driving down 14 and going down a hill and looking straight on at it, there will be screening. As far as the runoff goes, you're required, we've done a lot of these, so we've heard all of the same stuff over and over and over again. But I would just like to revisit how you're required to repair all existing drain tiles and the benefits of this proposal versus putting a car dealership on the property.
So as far as the upgrades to the existing tile system, a, a survey, a physical survey of the existing tiles is required. I don't know that that's been performed yet, but it will be prior to the building permit. And then we will comply with any county requirements to repair, replace, upgrade the existing tiles. So that is part of, of our plan. As far as the comparison in the surface and the runoff, comparison between agriculture, a business use, and a native grass prairie, what we look at in engineering, something called a runoff curve number. And basically what that does is it says how much of the rainfall that hits the ground will runoff compared to what is, what'll infiltrate. And the highest runoff, lowest infiltration is a roof or a parking lot. That's typically a 98. So just about all that water is running off, not going into the ground, not evaporating. When you get to, and that's, if it's a, you know, if it's a school, if it's a home with a roof and a driveway, if it's a, you know, whatever it is. That also includes on our site, the gravel drive. So there is a gravel drive, there is an equipment pad, and those are treated as the high runoff areas. But everything else on the site, which is the vast majority, is the native grass prairie. Depending on the different soil types, those can be half to a third, or two thirds more runoff than what we would have on, on an infiltration, or would infiltrate compared to existing. So there's runoff from a lawn, there's less runoff from a grass prairie. You can just picture the longer grasses slowing down the water, deeper roots infiltrating more water, and there's more places for that water to go.
Thank you. And that's, that's a really good segue to my next question about our stormwater management ordinance. You've developed other properties and solar farms within McHenry County. Can you explain how you have to follow our stormwater management ordinance and, and how that impacts your site design?
We will look at first the amount of impervious surface on the site. Because your count, your ordinance has a threshold for the amount of new impervious that we would add, whether or not any other permanent best management, best management practices, BMPs, would be required on the site. Our goal would be to minimize the amount of impervious surface so that there's no impact, so that the county stormwater rules wouldn't even apply because our impact is so low. If our, and part of, of the benefit of decreasing the size of the driveway is to fall closer into the county's goals in, in limiting impervious surface. If we do meet the threshold of the county requirements and there are infiltrate or detention or infiltration requirements that are triggered, what we would have is either infiltration ditches or rain gardens, similar to the one that's installed right outside the county. And those would be likely on the south side of the site, maybe a little bit on the east side. But those would be not large ponds, but they will be ditches with plants that will help infiltrate the water even more.
Thank you so much. So just to clarify, the testimony is that this site is in substantial compliance with the state setback requirements. It actually is much further back from the B1 requirements and the state A1 conditional use requirements for solar. This is going to improve drainage and water infiltration as well as groundwater recharge to the area. And without this MAP amendment, the site could certainly be more, much more intensive than proposed.
Yes, that's our question.
Thank you. I'm done.
Mr. Shenoff?
Good afternoon. I would just like you to clarify one thing. I'm going to guess that, and it's a lot for the benefit of the public because they don't see these projects all the time like we do. This is a pretty gently sloping parcel from what I can see. Am I correct that it's from the north, sloping to the south downward, and that's why it tends to drain to that channel such as it is? That being the case, for the benefit of the others here, you're not planning on doing any major excavating or changing of the grade of this property, other than excavating for the driveway probably? Would that be an accurate statement?
That's exactly correct. So we will remove topsoil in the area of the gravel drives because that would be the wrong way to build a gravel drive. We would remove that material and that, as a requirement of the agricultural impact mitigation agreement that we signed with Department of Agriculture, that topsoil needs to stay on site so it can be, during decommissioning, it can be spread back. So that will be typically land spread over parts of the site, just the topsoil. We, we won't try to put swales up or berms up or a topsoil pile. We'll try to blend it into the existing ground. And you're correct, we, we won't, it costs us more to move the dirt around since it's such a nice gently sloping site that works well with the solar panels and the trackers. And we won't, we don't plan to do any significant grading.
That's all I get. Thank you.
Mr. Shenoff?
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions and I'm not going to give them to you in any particular order because they just came up, they came up. So first of all, I thought I read in your materials that you provided that you were considering, instead of mowing the, the plantings that you put in, that you were considering using sheep grazing, is that correct?
That's always an option for the future. Matt Kwitkowski, Nexanth developer, that's always an option for the future. It's called agrivoltaics. It hasn't really taken in Illinois just yet. We do it in the Northeast a lot, but as more of these sheep grazing companies come online, that's an option for me. It's not, it's, it's, we like to leave the option open for the future operation of the facility, but it's not anything that's set in stone right now.
So currently, your plan is to mow, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Now, we've had quite a few of these solar farms come our way. And usually they're, they're called either a community solar farm or a utility solar farm. This is a commercial solar farm. Can you please explain how that's different?
Yeah. So utility scale for us, for my company, it's anything over five megawatts. And those, generally when you build utility scale, you're selling, basically you get a purchase agreement from the utility, you're selling to them, and the power is being exported, you know, then through transmission lines, the big, the big 69 kilovolt plus lines that you see, those big metal poles. And this is considered, it's under five megawatts, but it's called community solar. And it's put on, the big difference is it's put on the distribution grid, so the local grid as, as we went through. So the energy stays local.
So you're just calling it community solar?
Yes, community solar.
Okay. Not commercial?
No. I mean, technically it is commercial solar.
That term was something that tripped me up.
Because it's not like, it's not, it's not like it's, we're building it for, for our use, you know, behind the meter, they call it. This is, this is for the, you know, the public, the utility use.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you to say it once more, you're not cutting any trees down?
No. This graphic kind of shows, or both of them, the green area, there's quite a bit that do fall on our property and there's no plans and we're committed to not cutting any trees down.
Even if they're noxious, right?
That's correct, yeah. I mean, everything, everything that, basically there's no plans to cut any trees on our property, not even one tree.
We had quite a few letters regarding this hearing, most of them objecting to this. But one of them mentioned possibly building a screening type fence along the houses. I'm not advocating that one way or another, I just want to bring your awareness that some of the neighbors might want to do that, you know, it depends on what you want to do. We do not require that, but it's something to think about. Now, the power poles that you're going to need for this site, do you have to install any or are they already here?
We have to install them.
How many?
I believe six.
And where would they be?
Right along the entrance drive. Seven poles in here, and then it connects to a pole on the existing, because there's existing power poles and electric line running on the south side of the road. So we'll have a few, about three of them are ours, and about four would be the local electric utility, and they would connect to a new line on the, on the existing power pole.
Okay. So none of them are there right now? They all have to go up?
Yeah. Sometimes the point of any connection is, is there now? But I think this one might be a midspan between two existing poles. So we might be putting one new one on the line, depending on where we connect, but there are about seven that are on our property.
Okay. Thank you. Went over the phones. Now, this question is for Mike.
Michael Marus, real estate appraiser.
Okay, thank you. Now, you had mentioned that none of the assessors that you spoke to had needed to provide relief for property access to any residents who were near solar, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, am I saying that correctly? You understand that point?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Were any of these assessors, did any of them have people come to them asking for relief because of being on or near a solar farm?
I think of the hundred and fifteen assessors that I've interviewed, they've only had two formal complaints. And upon investigation, they found no merit and granted no relief.
Okay.
Now, when they're ongoing, and just to provide more color, as there's a proposed project in a casual situation, you know, whether they're out in town, or a church, or whatever, they did get questioned and said that they would be studying it. People would tell them they don't like the looks of solar, they don't like the change. And they're not supporting it, they're negative. And then, you know, they were watching, and many times, board members, either on a ZBA or a county board, would ask them to pay particular attention and study it. And they did, and they found no support to provide value reduction.
So in other words, the house values stayed the same?
Well, the assessor, the assessor didn't change the value. And then looking at transactions and looking at market transactions, you know, the markets in most areas have been improving. And there was no difference in the rate of escalation, all things being equal, between the properties that were proximate to a solar farm and similar properties in that same area.
Thank you. Right, my next couple of questions are probably for you, Matt.
Okay.
Matt over here. Not, like I said, we've heard a lot of these solar farm hearings, so we pretty much know the answer to my next couple of questions. And they are, what are the harmful effects that these panels can have? If they leach something into the soil, can they leach something into the soil? And are there, is there any noise associated with solar farm?
Okay, so first for the panels, the types of panels that we're proposing, these come from Minnesota. And these are not the type of panels that have the cadmium telluride chemicals in them. So when you hear about that, there are still manufacturers in the US that make that type of solar panel. We don't use them. We are, we're using the ones that are glass and silicon. When that breaks up, there's no harmful chemicals that go into the soil. So if, during construction, if a backhoe hits one of the panels, if there is a hailstorm and it breaks some of the panels, in general, the glass will crack, the panels will be replaced, and nothing will happen. There's nothing that can leach into the soils. So that's the material, what was the other?
Noise associated with the solar farm?
Okay, so the way these panels and trackers work, there's two types. So there's the fixed solar panels, where the lines run east-west, and the panels just stay in one place. This is an axle that runs north-south, and they tip east in the morning, west in the afternoon, and slowly rotate, obviously to follow the sun during the day. There is a small amount of noise with that. But if you're ten, fifteen feet away from those motors, they're small electric motors, you don't hear them. The other noise that's on this site is the inverters and transformers that are shown right here. They basically sound like, they're cooling fans. And so they're like a window-mounted air conditioner. So there is some noise associated with that, but it's not loud. And we've got these probably five-hundred, six-hundred feet away from any of the residences. They're up in the front of the site. They're probably three-hundred feet from the residences across the field. So there will be no noise from this, from these inverters that leaves our site.
Especially at night because there's no sun at night.
There's no sun at night, you've heard that before?
Yes, we have.
We say that one too.
Yeah. How long will it take to construct the site?
Six to nine months typically is how these sites go in.
Our, sorry, our site.
You're the other man.
Yeah, Matt Kwitkowski, Nexamp developer. Our site, a site like this, our work's generally done with good weather in four months. And then the rest is just waiting for comment to complete all those upgrades that we talked about. And then do the testing, the new back tests, and make sure that, you know, the system's working correctly before it's turned up. So that could be up to nine months.
Okay, how long do you anticipate it will be before you can begin construction?
Generally, not to use jargon, but it's six months after we NTP the project. That's an internal financing goal that we have. Our hopes it would NTP by the first of the year, and then it's six months from there. So June of 2026.
That would be the earliest.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it would take four to six months after that?
Yes.
Okay, and then it would be operational?
But it would be operational sometime either by the end of '26 or probably most likely by the spring of '27.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Chanakal.
Yeah, just a couple of questions about the updated site plan. Looking at the red area, or my big one here, it's sort of salmon pink. There are areas that are colored with the salmon pink, but don't have any panels grown in, drawn in. In fact, you are putting panels in those areas, aren't you? The ones that are colored but blank at the present time.
Right, this is Matt Clemente again, for the record. And what we did is, when we submitted our original plan, it was the panels that are shown in black. The updated plan that we're presenting today, after the minor adjustments that we made, the panel areas are a different shape. So the panels would be in this pink area. We just didn't go through the time to draw those panels. And it would've been too confusing. We tried to just show the overall area of the panel.
And the black ones outside the pink area are not going to exist.
That's correct, they will go in.
Okay, and then looking at the same thing, you've got a black inverter and transformer pad, that isn't going to exist. It's the pink one that's a little further along there. That's the one that really is going to happen.
That's correct. And by the same token, the driveway, the black.
Yeah, it's the blue driveway, not the gray one.
Yes, and I tried to show that in the legend a little bit as well, but you're correct, that's.
Okay, and you're not paving any of the driveway? It's all going to be gravel, is that correct?
Depending on DOT requirements, there's a portion of the driveway.
There might be an apron that you have to put in.
But the rest would be gravel.
And that'll be concrete rather than asphalt?
Typically, that is what we've been doing. It typically goes by the DOT's request.
Okay. And then finally, what is the status of your interconnection agreement with Combat? Is it in final form, or is it?
It's been executed, Matt Kwitkowski with Nexamp developer. It's been executed, and we've made the interconnection payment.
Okay, so that's further along than many of them that we see at this time. They usually have it pending. And then finally, are you leasing this parcel, or have you purchased the land?
It's a lease, up to forty years.
And can it be renewed beyond forty years?
No, no, it's a base of twenty, with one extension for ten and two extensions for five, totaling forty years.
Okay, and typically, the panels will last forty years, but after fifteen or twenty years, they produce significantly less power, is that correct?
Yes, these are tier-one panels, very, a twenty-five-year guarantee from our manufacturer. So at least twenty-five years, and then we assess if they're, you know, still producing, replace it as needed after those twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cosin.
Thank you. Could you just go over your, you know, direct to department practice? The neighborhood outreach, you mentioned you did for one, but how did you engage in your neighborhood outreach? Letters, cards, hold a meeting, so forth?
Yeah, as required by the county, we, there was a public notice. And then we did contact the wedding venue owner, Gordy Widener, who's the south, and then the church also. We had a lot of concerns about the access drive, proximity to their access drive. They had concerns about that. When they have events, they have a lot of traffic trying, you know, when the event's over, a lot of traffic stacks up, tries to leave that facility. They were worried about the proximity of our entrance, so we moved it down. And then they were also concerned about the site triangle there. And that's why it's truncated. Matt, can you point that out?
Sure.
It's truncated like that. And, you know, the development doesn't go down here. This will all just be like low grass prairie. So when people feel good visibility to the road.
Any other direct outreach to any other property owners?
No.
The relocation of the driveway, what is the confidence level that IDAT will accept the other location?
We have pretty good luck with IDAT with the location of the drives. We might be more concerned if there was a curve, if there was a hill in that location. But it's a pretty straight stretch of road, pretty much even grade along this area. We don't expect IDAT to have any problems with the location of it. It would just be how they want it constructed.
Understood. Back to the leasing, if you were successful to turn this over to another company or so forth, all the terms and conditions would still apply?
Yes.
In terms of interpreting the large or small size, there were some clarifications I was just looking for. There's some symbology on here that says GB and EB. What it was those? They're in the shadows.
Electric buried.
Got it.
And probably gas buried, you see GB, gas buried.
In the area of the additional poles, you show following the original coloration that the first draft is in black and then the salmon color. Thank you. Glad we're not talking about pink in comments. Pink, you have a crossover pole, but it still remains to the northwest of the service drive. What would it be, is it feasible to bring the entire array to the southeast of the service drive?
Depending on the original proposal, we were tying into an existing pole. I believe, I don't know if the new proposal is lined up with the existing pole or not. A lot of that is out of our hands and is directed by Combat.
Right, the only, again, it's a visual issue because it's the most noticeable thing that people have with poles. And that is a corner pole. And so I didn't know if the span was too great to impose a burden on you to go to the other side of the driveway.
Or the other side of the drive.
And then follow the driveway in the same direction as you have to your salmon-colored new utility, correction?
But to be on the other side, we can, I guess we can talk to Combat.
Right, because then you would not, you would not, the poles would not be double-pole. You would have the existing service pole running along 176, and then your poles are the next direction.
Yes.
And then the array, this way there'd be some visual separation, if there would be. But that's just.
Yeah, a lot of that is up to, but we'll do our best.
So to clarify, that's a Commonwealth Edison petition and not one imposed by the county, correct?
Okay, yes.
Then, just to be clarified, the gray area, the gray squares, has been replaced by the salmon color in terms of the inverter locations and the equipment pad switch?
Yes.
And the number of inverters that are going to be on the site, approximation, I mean.
These are the small inverters. Let's see. Eight inverters.
And that area is not illuminated at night, or so forth?
That's correct, no lighting is planned.
And any noise would likely also be within the background noise of the vehicular traffic of State Route 176?
Yes.
That's correct. And in terms of the equipment, are these bifacial panels? Meaning that they draw energy both top and bottom, or below and up?
I think they are.
And... Specific to the fencing type, I'm in the more urban township, but there's a comment that I've heard about rural square fencing. Do you have an illustration of the type of fencing that you'll be installing generally?
Is there a picture? It's a wire farm fence, so the posts are wood, and the wire is open squares. So not a, we're not proposing a chain-link fence.
And there's a combination on the lower level to allow for transfer of?
Small rivers, right.
And can we go a little bit on the subscription that people have? How does one subscribe to the energy that is developed on your site?
They can do that, there's multiple companies like ours that operate these kind of facilities. They can just go to a website, they probably get postcards all the time, and then subscribe. There's no cost to subscribe. You're just basically getting the credit. To put it simple, it's like getting a gift card for, you know, eighty-five dollars. It's a hundred-dollar value. So you pay us eighty-five dollars, we tell Combat to credit your bill at a hundred dollars, if that makes sense. It's a fifty, approximately fifteen percent savings.
But could somebody in the immediate area look to subscribe specific to your site?
Yes, anyone in the Combat area can. We have had scenarios where they wanted to stay local. And we can window out like a six-month period that, you know, it's only for residents of Crystal Lake, or, you know, Murray Grove, or whatever.
We have nothing against the people of Boone County, but... And about how many subscribers are you likely to?
This one? This one is... It was in the two-hundred-and-seventy range, I can't.
Oh, sorry.
That was four-hundred. That was Crystal Lake, oh, Community Benefits, I think it's on there. This one's two-hundred-and-fifteen.
Two-hundred-and-fifteen, at least. Households?
Households, yes.
I just lost my train. There are, back to the map, there are these square blocks that are connected by lines. What are those?
That's the project fence.
That's the project fence?
Yep.
For that. Then there are also references to a four-foot... to a four-foot personal gate on the south and the northwest. What is that? And for the southern one, how does one get to it?
So this would be just a man gate, just a person gate opening in the fence. So if somebody needed to do some maintenance outside the fence, they're able to act, go out through that for the gate.
I was obscured by the number 217 on the west side.
Yes.
Sorry.
I'll ask for that.
All right. And then to the economic chart, I'm seeing. In the downzoning, there is the present payment, and bear with me, to the taxing bodies based on the B1 appraised value. But now that the property will be appraised at A1 or agricultural, would you agree that the contribution or the tax made by this more than makes up the change in the distinction between a B1 and A1?
Yes. It's taxed per megawatt. It's $218,000 per megawatt, so.
So if you were just converting this to an A1, the taxing bodies would not be made whole?
Right.
To use that phrase?
From what I understand, my, my, basically.
Right. Because there's somebody in the room who understands smoke and mirrors better than us. And that gets me to my other, Mike, thank you. Have you ever done an appraiser back to a site after it was constructed, whether for this client or any others?
Yes.
Could you expand upon that on what you've discovered?
Sure. Recently, I looked at a site in northwest Wisconsin, Iowa County, called Badger Hollow Wind, which was two-phase, 150 megawatts per phase, kind of up near Land's End's headquarters northwest of Madison, and looked at transactions before the project was announced and after the project was up and running, the values increased. The other one that's fascinating is called North Star Solar, which is in Chicago County, Minnesota. It's about 25 miles north of what I call Twin Cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul. And, you know, somewhat similar situation here. But so that was the first larger-scale solar in the Midwest that opened in 2017. It was 100 megawatts and about 900 acres. But it actually surrounded about 10 far mets of 10-acre houses. And this one was particularly of concern. And we've been tracking sales since then up until six months ago. And so has the assessor, and it's made national publications, and the values have continued to go up. Because of that, they've added more solar in the county, and it's been highly successful.
That concludes my comments. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I have just a few questions. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources in their letter said that the site should be decompacted before planting to the native prairie. You're fine with that? We added that to the condition. Okay. And then also, would you bring up, Kim, would you bring up the photo of the solar project that they used as an example showing the prairie plantings and everything? Or you just had it there a minute ago?
I got one.
Yeah, there. So we've got letters, again, comparing the Woodstock site. And the Woodstock site is a fixed site. It doesn't tilt. You know, this looks totally different than what a fixed site would be. So the Woodstock site does not, is not comparable to what this site will look like, correct? As far as what the panels look like.
Correct. Actually, those panels you see there are approximately the same size, and they're trackers as well, so they'll move.
Because on the Woodstock site, you wouldn't be able to see any prairie underneath because it's just like a hill of panels.
Yeah, with the Woodstock site, yeah, because of the shade, permanent shading under the panels creates a difficult situation.
So this provides much more benefit to the soil, to the prairie plants and everything versus a fixed system.
That's correct.
Also, there in the Solar Water Conservation District Report, as well as, I think, IDNR, they talked about some ecological sites in the area. Can you, like, there's a fen. I think you're familiar with probably what those are. Maybe not. Let me just explain to you anyhow some of these sites. I just want you to explain, like, there's a marsh, there's a sedge meadow, and there's a fen nearby. So would a business use on this property, such as a gas station or a restaurant, have more impact on these ecological resources than like a solar farm?
Typically, yes. Obviously, most of the existing site is farmed. Those areas may...
They're not on the site. They're within the region.
Right. So they would most likely be impacted more by additional runoff and possible flooding than they would by a major flood.
And also, this is in a strategic aquifer recharge area. Can you explain how these prairie plants and everything would be beneficial to that versus another type of use?
Right. I guess the key item there is that they are typically long-stem and deep-root, and both of those will slow down the water and allow for, and promote additional infiltration into the soil.
Other Matt, you talked about you could have a window of like six months for local people only to subscribe to this. Is that something we'd be willing to do in this project?
Yes.
If we made a condition like that?
Yeah.
So that anybody who wants to get, what is it, like a 10 to 20% break in their electricity?
Probably 15%.
Yeah. Could the neighbors would have the first opportunity to do that versus somebody in Boone County or the county or someplace else?
Yep.
That would be great. I would like that. And then, I think you've covered it all, but under big idea number three in the staff report, "Let's Grow Smarter", the county should also maybe, I don't know if you can bring that up in the camera or not. But anyhow, I'll just read it. Because you wrote, "The applicant should be prepared to address how the proposed use relates to this statement." So I'm going to read that statement. "The county should also be open to commercial enterprises in the unincorporated areas that are major generators of jobs or tax revenues for which no suitable municipal sites exist elsewhere in the county or that are dependent upon a direct proximity to agriculture or open space and designed in harmony with these areas." Can you just kind of address that point for us?
Jim Griffin, I can address that point, yeah. Well, certainly, I'm sure the county is interested in developing sites that are major generators of jobs. But with that, obviously, comes then an intensive use of property and increased traffic and things like that. And so when you look at this site, where it's located, its shape is a triangle. It's got, you know, residential uses adjacent to that. So it doesn't seem like a site that someone looking to, you know, have a manufacturing facility or some type of really large intense use is going to be looking at. So I don't think the county's, I don't think there's the opportunity there. And I think the fact that it's been vacant for almost 20 years, since it's been zoned, B1 bears that out, that this is, this is not going to be a job-creation-type development on this site. So I don't think the county is going to lose an opportunity here if this were to be approved for a solar project that it would otherwise have to attract some kind of use that would have job creation. So I think that's, you know, given. So I think that would be our answer, that this is not going to preclude some other opportunities.
So you have just some construction jobs, but nothing after it's constructed. But you have increased tax revenue. Is there any demand for county services by your site?
There is not. So it's no impact on...
So it's a total gain for the taxpayer, no cost. I think that's all I have. Before we have questions from staff, we're going to take a five-minute break. So if anyone needs to use the bathroom, they can.
That's right.
At this time, please have a seat. Now, we'll continue on. The next item would be questions from staff for the petitioner.
Just one question. Have you had any contact with iDOT yet about the access, the proposed access?
No, we have not.
No, okay. Do you have any reason to believe they would have any issue with a commercial access in that location?
No.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, so now is the opportunity for members of public to ask questions. Now, I just want to remind you, this is not a time for statements. You'll have that opportunity later, quite soon, hopefully before we have to be out of this building by 4:30. If questions don't go too long, then the statement comes right after that. So then you'd have your opportunity to make a statement. But if you have questions that have not been answered, now's your opportunity to ask those. You have three minutes. You'll need to state your name and address, and then you can go ahead and ask your questions. And then, after the questions have been asked, then we will hear the staff report. And then, at that time, you can make your statements. So again, then you'll have three minutes at that time. So this is only for questions, not for statements. So we can get to your statements hopefully at today. So, anyone who wants to ask a question, please come up over here on my left so that the recording can get you, and then you can go ahead and ask questions. And I'll use a timer on my phone for you, three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Randy Harbin. My wife, Kristy.
Address.
You've addressed most of my concerns.
Address, please, sir.
Address.
Your address?
3919 McCave Avenue, Crystal Lake.
Thank you.
I've lived in McHenry County currently for 40 years. My family's property abuts the back of the site here. You've addressed my concerns about sound and light. I have one. Does the project consume any water after construction? Do you use any groundwater?
No.
No water?
No water.
And so, no water in means no water out? So you won't affect my well?
No.
Very good. That is it, thank you.
Next person.
My name's Tom Greeno. 1330 Beehand Road in Crystal Lake. And it was simple. After listening to all the words you said about the foliage and everything, and that, how hidden will this be when I drive up and down 176?
Well, depending on the height of the road compared to the vegetation that we plant, compared to the panels and the time of day, you would likely see the tops of the panels peeking over the top of the vegetation, at least for the first couple of years. As the vegetation continues to grow, you'll see less and less.
So your plan is, basically, it's going to be pretty invisible?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hi, I'm Marcia Millman. I live at 3916 Overland Road. First, I'd like to know, I read in your report that you have 60 days to repair panels when something's broken. Is that true?
I believe that's the county requirement. We monitor these sites remotely, and then there's monthly visits. We fly drones sometimes just to see if there's any vacant sense, cracks in the panels themselves. And we get data that shows there's something off in a particular string of panels. So yeah, they're constantly monitored. We have a huge procurement of panels through Elean in Minnesota that we've like advanced purchase, so we can get, we can swap out panels very quickly.
So you have 60 days to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, on the decommissioning aspect, I understand that can go up to 12 months and maybe even be extended. So during that time, nothing is monitored and nothing is maintained when it's being decommissioned?
Oh, no, we maintain the site throughout the whole operational period.
During the decommissioning?
Generally, it only takes what, having to decommission?
Probably three months would be more accurate for decommissioning, is what it would actually take.
Okay, but the site's maintained and things are monitored during that time? It's not just abandoned, is what I'm getting at?
Right, we would still be subject to any county rules. One of the first things that happens at the beginning of construction or beginning of decommissioning is that you would see erosion control fence or erosion protection go up around the site so that if there is, you know, parts of the ground that is disturbed, you don't have runoff or sediment that would leave the site. So we would still need to meet all the county's requirements for construction or for the decommissioning.
Okay. Also, if you don't have enough rain, as I read in your report that that cleans the panels, will you be using chemicals to clean the panels?
No, we don't use any chemicals.
What if we don't have rain, if we're going through a die-spell and you have, you know?
We haven't seen any with the modern panels. They don't need to be cleaned like old panels used to be, all the protective, I guess, coatings or whatever.
There's, we don't have to do, you know, cleaning or waxing of the panels, anything like that.
Okay. And I, in the, solar farms can, you know, stay for so long, for 30 to 40 years. I'm wondering, are you the management company through the whole thing? Or are we going to go through a slew of different management companies?
We own and operate all the facilities. So our intention, obviously, anything can happen with a company, but our intention is that we're going to operate this facility all the way to decommissioning.
I just wanted to ask about it being an attractive nuisance for our kids. You can get that to some realtor.
Yeah, or you can just make a comment. Okay, anybody else?
Just a curiosity.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Dottie Painter. I live at 1309 C Beehand Road, which is right off of Buell, which is over there. My questions, one would be, you had mentioned that if there's any damage, there's no chemical problem. Does that also mean metal, have bad, heavy metals?
Right, the types of panels that we use, it's not the tell you, the, said it before, right? Can't even tell your eye, panels. So there are not metals contained that would be released into the soil. That's not the kind of panels that we use.
And then, I've heard you use, you know, different forms of water, but the groundwater, are you aware of right off of Valley View is an aquifer that maintains waterways all the way to Joliet and our Crystal Lake and some of our other lakes around here? They're not fed by runoff, they're fed by groundwater. So how does, how deep do these pylons or whatever it is, mounts that go in the dirt, is it going to interrupt the groundwater?
No, they wouldn't be down as far as the aquifers go. So you're, the axles that the panels are mounted on, that tip from one side to the other, those are driven into the ground, and those can be, depending on the soils, 10 to 15 feet into the ground. So they're relatively deep. They don't go near as deep as your aquifers. But what does happen on these sites, especially with the native prairie that is one step better than a farm field, that's one step better than a lawn, that's 10 steps better than a business, is that water does soak into the ground from the surface. So to help recharge the aquifer.
Okay, and then, this is kind of out there. I've been looking up things. You consider this site, I don't know why, in a residential area, but a lot of places have now, for solar farms, have been sharing land with electric towers and poles that where there's no, I mean, it's clear to the sky. The soil is not being confused with, it's being shared. There's ways to drive in and drive out, no grass, nothing. Why this property rather than power lines? Or, you know, some countries actually build the shading areas over dams to benefit waterways. I don't understand why here. So, and not power line and work in co-op with corridors of our lands.
So, a lot goes into the selection of a site. Why here is because it does have power lines that are, that we can connect to. And there are a number of items that work with this particular site to make it feasible for this construction.
Hey, anyone else?
Hello, my name's Jason Pierce. I live at 1812 Blossom Street, Crystal Lake. My first question in relation to the gentleman here with the real estate, pertaining to property value. Of the values that were assessed, how many were this close of proximity to a solar farm? As the Furtens Trail neighborhood is within essentially about 200 feet? Even a ballpark percentage?
Well, neighborhoods, many were that close. Individual houses were anywhere from 90 feet to, let's say, 8 to 900 feet. Actually...
Pertaining to benefit from the solar farm, you say that essentially a subscription is required to gain benefit from the solar farm. Why is a subscription required and not just a direct benefit to the residents that immediately adjourn the solar farm?
Community solar, that's just how it's set up. We're basically an independent power producer. And so, we pass the savings along to anybody that subscribes. So you have to subscribe, we pay, pass the savings that we get from comment, and you get the credit that is applied to your comment bill.
It's set up under state law, the state program governed.
The process behind that subscription, is that going to be something that is going to be made aware to the residences in the area?
Yeah.
And the process of how to do so?
Yeah.
And like direct links and so on to websites to do so?
In places, especially if we have some kind of local restriction. Regards to the local restriction, you'll get a lot of mailers from us, and that'll tell you how. You can call, you can go online, it'll have all that in the mailer. Again, free to sign up, free to cancel, you know, I'm not happy with their way.
Is there a limitation on the area of, around that solar farm that people can subscribe? Like a hard limit, like you're outside this many miles, you're not available to?
The way community solar is set up, anybody in comment territory can sign up. So that's why...
Somebody all the way on the other side of Crystal Lake that's not even near this can benefit? So how do you have a cap then of like 200 and so many subscribers? Is that just based on what you produce?
Yeah, that's based on the capacity of this project. It's 250 residents can subscribe. And then, we could restrict the window where it's just local for a certain amount of time, obviously. If people aren't subscribing, we just can't sit there forever for years and wait. So like for six months, we could say, you know, it has to be in some mile radius of the farm and have those local folks, kind of give them the first shot to subscribe. But you, today, you can go and subscribe, you know, there'll be like a waiting list in most cases, but this one, we can restrict to, you know, a period, a certain period of exclusivity. Is that, that sounds a great word? For local.
Hello. My name's Terry Pierce. I live at 1813 Blossom Street. So a couple of things that... You, gentlemen?
Matt?
Matt, thank you. There was two Matts, but anyway. So, when you speak of prairie grass, prairie fields, I'm envisioning, and don't take this wrong, but everything that was just done at the Prairie Grove Grade School for the new parking lot, that is ugly as all sin. It's not maintained, it looks like caca. Is that how we're going to expect this to look? Is this overgrown field of whatever? You also talk about screening, more on some of this fencing. Essentially, you're just describing glorified chain-link fence. Is that what we're going to see? Or are all your plantings and shrubs and whatnot going to be hiding that fencing? Last to that point is, with all of the plantings and the shrubs, so how long is it going to take for that to grow? Before we're not seeing this solar field?
So, I'll take them in reverse order, last one can go to Matt Kay. As far as what we try to do with the plants, they go in around 3, 4, 5 foot tall. That's when we have the best chance of planting and successful growth. If we plant them when they're too big, it's harder to get them to take and trickier. So, that's sort of the sweet spot. As far as the inside or outside the fence, these are outside the fence so that this fence is screened. There'll be a portion here that's inside the fence. This is currently shown inside the fence. We could probably move it.
That's outside.
This is outside?
Yeah.
Oh, it's currently, it's, okay. Got to learn my salmon. So that is outside. So in general, most of the places, the fence and the panels will both be screened. And then, for the maintenance, Matt can answer that for the...
Yeah, these types of, as you're well aware, these types of planting can't be done by, kind of like your normal landscape company. A lot of projects that are public bid out, they get unqualified landscapers who don't have a lot of experience with establishing natives doing this work. Soil's not prepped right, they're not, they're not installing the seed at the correct times or seasons that should be installed for better termination. But a lot of it comes down to the company you hire. We have an exclusive contract with Natural Resource Services, NRS, who's got an office in Illinois. They're kind of all over the Midwest, but that's all they do, is maintain these types of plantings. And it's intensive for the first few years because you're fighting all the agricultural weeds, you've got perennial weeds, and that's why, you know, timing of mowings is key. Once those, the weeds set seed, you want to mow before then. You want to spot-spray any nuisance real bad, you know, like things like Canada thistle, things that are perennial that come back year after year and take over. So it takes a, it takes a certain niche to do this. So I can't speak for that project, but we do hire somebody that exclusively does this for all of our solar sites and many other natural parks. And they work a lot with parks districts on establishing these kind of landscapes.
Matt? Okay, he drops something.
Terry Greeno, 1313 Beehand Road in Crystal Lake. Two quick questions. The slope of the site, what direction is it sloping?
Slopes, in general, to the south. It's pretty gently sloped, but it drains to the existing swale ditch that's on the south side, just on the other side.
Okay. And then, there's 5.7 million, 5.07 million households in Illinois, and Illinois taxpayers support the incentive burden from the federal, state, and then the Ds on our utility bills. So 2.6 billion in subsidies?
You have a question?
Yes, I do. That averages out to, I wanted you to understand where my numbers are coming from, but it's all public information. It averages $75 to $100 per household, but only 4% of Illinois households have access. And so, I was wondering what the return would be per household. But also, you said that your notification to the residents was through public notice, but yet you're saying that we'll be getting specific mailings for the residents to have access to this? And I'm just wondering, the efficiency of your notices on us being able to take advantage of the, of this resource on our utility bills would be the same as your public notice to us?
I'll speak specifically to the subscription process. It's generally a year before the project goes online, you'll start getting these notices.
But to be fair, we were not notified specifically through Elean about any of this. And we all know it, so that's, you know, just so that you're aware. But then, what is the return on the households? That would be in this, the 225 households affected in this area? That would even have, be able to be supported by this project?
Well, what the, if you want to subscribe to the project, you get savings on your electricity.
Averaging what per household?
I think maybe 15%.
15%?
That's if you subscribe. People are not required to subscribe.
Yeah, I know, there's only 4% in Illinois who even have access to it. So, out of the 5.07 million households in Illinois, yes. That's public information. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Colleen Shutt, 390 South McCave. I may have two questions. The first one is, could you show me any other properties in McHenry County that are as close to the homes as this proposed project? Like that one, that there's, that's quite a ways away from any existing homes. Can you show me any others in McHenry County that are that close to a residential home?
Yeah, I can, I could speak to the one on Dotty Road. There's a non-participating residence within probably 200 feet.
Just one resident or something?
One.
One, not the whole room?
Yeah, but we have others in all the counties that are very similar.
My other question is, I noticed on your map that you provided double evergreens for the wedding venue on the side of the solar panels. And I notice, I agree that there is a tree line on our backside. That tree line loses its leaves from winter, so you have nothing there. Why is it that we're not allowed any sort of evergreens on the back lot lines? Other than a cattle fence?
Well, I think the, as you can see on the site, we are relying upon the existing foliage.
But that vegetation will die out come winter. It's all just bushes and trees, there'll be nothing but branches. So you can't really say that that vegetation is going to hide. It's only going to hide it for three months out of the year. So we get a cattle fence, and the wedding venue in 176 gets vegetation and double evergreens. We get nothing to hide the view. Why is that?
Mostly because of the existing vegetation.
And that's really supposed to make a difference?
That's based on the county ordinance, county's requirements, that the...
So you'll accommodate the wedding venue because they have people driving up their driveway for their wedding events, but you won't accommodate the people that are on that back lot? That's what I'm asking.
I get, what we can do, and I guess we could run this past the county I get, what we can do, and I guess we could run this past the county because it's not shown on our plan now, but we can add, um, some screening, maybe just to the bottom, bottom quarter here.
But that's not even our property. Our property is all the way from north to the south. All our properties run along that back lot. And you're saying that those trees are gonna be enough coverage for this when come winter, there's no coverage whatsoever. But you're gonna provide beautiful screen rate for one seventy-six and the wedding venue, but you won't do any of that for our properties? And there are seven of us along that property line?
Um, I guess we can a- ask the, the zoning board if, if they would-
I would highly recommend that.
Have a condition for us to do that? If that's necessary, um, to meet the ordinance compared to the existing vegetation?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, oh, you have a question? If there's anybody else, please stand up because we wanna, we wanna get done here. We gotta be out of here and-
Barb Lorenz, fourteen thirty H M Board in Crystal Lake. Um, so while you guys are building this-
Sorry, 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 sorry.
-site, um, what are you gonna do with traffic on one seventy-six? We already by getting in and out. We have enough traffic-
Can I, can I answer a question?
The, the, um, the entrance, um, during construction or during the regular operation will be based on Illinois DOT standards. Um, if during the portion of, uh, the time when we are actually constructing the driveway, just like your driveway or anybody else, there would be some traffic control that would be set up for the, you know, the day or so where that is being constructed. Um, but otherwise, um, you know, our, the construction traffic would use the road just like anybody else uses the road. And the benefit is that, um, we're using it just during construction and then during the lifetime of the project, um, it's a much, much lower use.
Right, I'm just saying during the time, what, I can't remember.
You can make a comment later, but he answered your question.
Okay, thank you.
We wanna make sure you get time for your comments. Anybody else have a question? Okay, we'll move on to the report from staff. Ms. Sharla.
So the subject property, um, as we discussed, is Zone B one. Um, that was Zone B one back in two thousand and seven. Um, and the applicant is requesting reclassification to the A one agricultural district. Um, the subdivision to the east is Zone, uh, for residential use. Uh, the property to the south is in the Village of Prairie Grove. Uh, across one seventy-six to the west is, uh, E one estate zone subdivision as well as, uh, B two business district. Uh, the subject property is currently used for agriculture. Um, the property to the east is residential as well as a couple of vacant lots there as well. To the south is designated as agricultural, although, uh, the wedding venue is a newer use out there that is not designated on our, our plan here yet. Um, and then there is a church as well to the south. Uh, to the west across one seventy-six is agricultural as well as, uh, residential use. And then our future land use designation for the subject property is office research and industrial. We've kind of gone over everything else there. I did go out to the site, the zoning sign was posted in the appropriate location. Um, I do feel that all of the state and county standards have been met. Um, with that being said, uh, the reclassification is a little bit different than what we are typically seeing with, um, solar requests, um, that that is along with it. Uh, staff does not have any objection to the down zoning of this property.
Does anyone on the board have any questions of staff? Okay, now the public gets your opportunity to make a statement. Now, I'm just gonna let you know that we have to close this hearing by, definitely by twenty after four because we have to be out of this building by four thirty. So, um, come on up, make your case, and then we'll, we'll have to close the hearing or continue the hearing to another. Your name and address.
My name and address is March Ramke, thirteen eleven Beacon Road. Um, I'm a RE/MAX agent for thirty-nine years. I live in the area, I've sold many homes in the area. And if you think that that's not going to impact these people that live all around this area, this, this property, it is going to impact it. I know because I'm the one that has to go in, price their house, and try and get it sold. And I know that this is going to have an effect. And, um, you know, as you look at the cul-de-sacs across the street, there's seven, eight hundred thousand dollar homes that are looking at a cornfield. Now, when we go to sell that house, that, that's gonna be looking over a solar field. So the place that's in Woodstock is in a, in an appropriate spot. There's a few houses on Lily Lake Road, and there's a construction site behind it, and that is not affected. This is affecting Beju Beach, Burton's Bridge, the, all the other on the, the north side of one seventy-six. And all I can say is, if you think this is not gonna have an effect, it will. I've been doing this for thirty-nine years. And like you, as the appraiser, you guys step in after it's sold. I'm the one that's trying to get these people the most money they can get for their homes. And if you'd like to buy one for seven or eight hundred thousand dollars on a cul-de-sac across the street and you look over the, the, the field, I'm sure we could find you a nice home there for around, around some money. That's all I got to say.
Okay, next person, please. And anybody else, please come and stand up so that we can move quickly.
Terry Pierce, eighteen thirteen Blossom Street. Um, and again, just to, to, I reiterate on what she just mentioned there is, you know, my concern is our property value. And I don't see how you can say that it's gonna benefit us when it's not. You know, we have a slim chance of even being one of hu- two hundred and fifty people that might get some benefit if we subscribe. It's just one more thing that you want us to pay for. And in the long run, we are paying for this. Um, one of the things too, you know, you never, I think you briefly had something mentioned about habitat. Well, we that live back here in Burton's Bridge and around, we love our animals. We love our wildlife. What is this gonna do to our wildlife? They're not gonna come, you know? You're gonna lose all of our birds, you know, we, we have deer, we have, you know, every type of wildlife that you can imagine that partake in this particular lot. And we have wild birds that come into this lot. And granted, it, it's an oversight weed fest right now. It's a farm field. I'd much rather look at that than that. And my last point is that, again, there's, there's no guarantee that you guys are going to maintain this property. Like I said, the school that just built that new parking lot, I had high hopes for the retention plan, oh, it's gonna look great. It looks like crap. It looks like crap because they don't take her, it is surrounded by high fields of weeds. That is what they're left with to look at. I don't wanna look at that. Like she said, all those properties, when those leaves and all those, all that foliage dies in the wintertime, we're left looking at that. We don't get all the double hedges, we don't get any of that. I don't wanna see one solar panel. If you guys allow this to happen, i- it's the biggest mistake. This is not the property that that belongs to. It belongs out in the countryside where nobody gives a rat's ass. We care about our property, we care about our subdivisions, subdivisions and everything that goes around it. Thank you.
Uh, Jason Pierce, eighteen twelve Blossom Street, Crystal Lake. Um, I agree and just wanna kind of reiterate to a lot of the points already made. Um, I do think that this is going to impact a lot of the wildlife in the area. Um, not only the wildlife, but a lot of the insects and bees. A lot of us in the neighborhood do a lot of gardening, uh, both, uh, you know, flowers and vegetable. Um, and it's a lot more than just a hobby. A lot of us use it as a supplement for food throughout the year. Um, and the impact on that, I think, is going to drastically change what we are able to yield off of, um, off of that planting. The other side of my concerns are the financial side. Um, I do think that this is definitely going to impact property values in the adjacent neighborhoods. Um, and at the end of the day, we may not really see any benefit to it. I understand that there is the potential and the option to subscribe to it, but there's more than two hundred and fifty homes in that immediate area that not everybody's going to benefit from it. Let alone when there's the potential of somebody not even close to that area to be able to benefit from it simply by subscribing. Um, and I personally don't agree to that. I think if anything, the people in the direct area should have the, the first chance and only chance at benefit from it. Um, and quite honestly, I hate to see my property value go down. I've literally only been in that house for two years. Uh, my wife and I plan on staying for quite some time, but I don't want to inevitably lose because of a solar field that I have no direct benefit from. That's it, thanks.
Yeah, you say easel?
Sure.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Um, my name is Marsha Millman, thirty-nine sixteen Overland Road. Um, I'm opposed to a commercial solar facility coming into our neighborhood because it doesn't belong in a residential area. This board indicates, um, what our residential corridor which starts at the river and goes past the parcel and then ends at the farm and the church or the, the wedding venue. Um, as you can see, there's a lot of residential density there too. And I, I also wonder if you've given any thought to the, um, attractive nuisance value to our kids with all the residents and the families in the area? Okay, so in reaching, in researching these energy facilities, also known as solar farms, I found numerous articles and websites citing the hazards of living by them. Um, things that you've heard before, property values and problems with runoff and flooding and wells being affected and health issues and solar fires which are hard to put out and give off toxic gases. Now, of course, your consultants are telling us a different story, but, um, I believe somebody else said it too. You just, you don't know what our experiences are gonna be in our particular neighborhood. And also, it's too soon for us to get data from long-term studies. Another reason solar farms don't belong in residential areas are they are industrial enterprises with industrial components. This project calls for four thousand two hundred and forty-eight solar panels. You know, twelve or more feet in height, mounted on wrapping with metal stakes driven into the ground, crowded onto a thirteen acre parcel with eight foot security fencing. So please tell me, how does this blend into our rural character of our neighborhood? It's industrial looking, it's visually intrusive, or, I'm sorry, visually, yeah, visually intrusive, and that's why nobody wants to live next to a solar commercial, or a commercial solar energy facility. And you can just, you can just ask people in general, I'm not gonna tell you that. I've been just asking my friends and different people that I've come across. And then also, according to the, the N R I report, which was found in the proposal, uh, this parcel is comprised of acreage with high aquifer contamination potential. The entire parcel is within an area designated as sensitive aquifer recharge. One hundred percent of the parcel contains highly permeable soils, and sixty-seven point six percent of the parcel has very limited soils for ground-based solar arrays. And on page sixty-three, it even stated that land use practices should be very conservative. With six months of aggressive construction coming on the parcel and all the manipulation of the land that it's gonna take to make this work, this is not good news for our neighbors or for our wells. So I agree with the people here, solar farms can certainly be a good thing in right locations. Um, you know, you can put them next to gravel pits or anywhere else, but not in our neighborhoods.
You have a comment?
I'm Barb Widener, fifteen twelve Route twenty-three Harbor. I'm the wedding venue owner. And I totally, you know, I can imagine your concerns with this. Um, my husband, Gordy, has been talking to the engineer, and I don't know how that came about. He called or they called, I don't know. Anyway, they were very accommodating to what we were thinking. Um, I'm not keen on it only that, no, we drive by it all the time, sure the fence, all that, we'll be fine to drive by. But we do have a large deck that is very high, and we will be looking over that. It doesn't matter if the vegetation is ten feet, fifteen feet, we're gonna see it. But I do see it, I mean, we're farmers. We have solar, our own private solar, it operates our shop, you know, everything there. It's a good thing. Um, I also had experience with, uh, we have fifteen acres of wildflowers that we put in for birds and monarchs and all that. And it's hard to maintain. You know, we, we have to mow it, we do it, and we're not professionals at it. Like you say, you're gonna have a professional there. But, um, it's not easy to get weeds, you know, it has to be worked on. Or it's gonna look like what you said, I understand. Um, so I find it, I like solar, but like you said, it has its place. Um, it's a better option than a hotel and manufacturing. It'll be quiet, we won't have traffic. I'm just saying if it goes in, I can put up with it. Do I want it? No, I like farm fields. I don't like the field looking like a noxious weed thing that it is now. I mean, it's ten feet high weeds in there, but anyway. I just understand neighbors, I understand your business, and I, solar's good. But I, I don't know if it's the right spot either. But I appreciate you guys working with us and accommodating some of the concerns we've had. So, they've been good about that with us, that's all.
Any else? Okay, do you have a closing statement?
Yes, I'll be brief. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for the time this afternoon. Um, obviously, as the zoning board, um, expert body, I think, you know, when you have to look at this, these requests, you have to start with the fact that the property's Zone B one right now. Um, obviously, you've heard testimony from the neighbors, the neighbors are not asking for, uh, that this be preserved so that there can be a warehouse or a hotel or something like that. Um, so this is among the potential options for the development of this property. I actually think this is, this is probably the least intensive of the possibilities. Um, it's a solar use, it's low profile, um, it's quiet. Once construction done, it creates very little traffic. And it also gives the neighbors the certainty of what that use is going to be next to their home for the next thirty or forty years. As opposed to a B one site that could be developed with some unknown use that could have much greater impacts. I do think we have presented information showing that we satisfied the standards for a down zoning to the agricultural zoning district, and that we have shown that, uh, if that is recommended for approval, that the project meets the required standards for a solar energy project. So we appreciate the time, and we appreciate all of the neighbors coming out, and we would respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval for both the rezoning and the conditional use. Thank you.
Being that it's four o'clock, I don't know if we could have time for a voting meeting?
I'm sure we're short two.
And we're also short one person. I mean, would you even be comfortable with six people voting on this? You're allowed seven.
Continue to, to the next meeting.
Otherwise, we'll continue to another date, and then, uh, the other member of the board can read the transcript.
Do that, sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Can you, can you look at the calendar and see when it could be available?
I'll just look it over here, but let's see if it's just, it shouldn't be much. Yeah, I have to go to another meeting. I'm just making the cold with my lunch.
That's what you need in the last of those days.
Really? Yeah. So what's going on?
I will be in northern Wisconsin this weekend by the orange hills.
Oh. It's going to be hot for like two more weeks and no rain. Come on, Kurt, bring some rain back. No, it's going to be 90 tomorrow and then 90.
The cold froze, supposed to be. Maybe that's one day.
I think you made that a full month, it's going to be in the 70s. That's perfect. Let's not get greedy.
Yes, and we'll do the voting meeting first, and then we have another petition that day. Okay, so this meeting will be continued to October?
One second. You said you're not going to be here on the 23rd?
I will not be here on the 23rd.
Shoot, okay, sorry.
Oh, so that won't work. How about the... So then we're going to look at into November.
Well, the 29th, we have another continuation if you wanted to add it with that one. Can you do the 29th?
We have no Mary that day.
Oh. Okay. But can Bill read it?
I'm sorry?
Usually, an alternate is not supposed to...
Otherwise, Bill could maybe, if Mary was...
I don't think alternates...
I don't think an alternate can read for a regular...
No, I don't think so. No. So then we would be...
You could put it on the one with the 5th, on the 5th of November.
The 5th says Arena Topas. Is that it?
Yeah. It's most likely going to be scheduled, but we could, again, start with the continuation.
Okay, the Wednesday, November 5th, is that where?
It is from the...
Okay. All right, so this hearing will be continued until November 5th at 1:30 p.m. in the same room.
I'm just thinking of something that's open, is it that closed?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, does that open like today?
Yes, it's exactly like today. Any member of the public can come, and you can hear our deliberations and the vote. Yeah. Any conditions that we put on this?
Let the public comment is done, so that...
Right, right.
So what number will it be? Can you say 130?
Yes, 130. Okay. At this time, this hearing is continuing.